Good evening. I'll call the, I'll call a meeting to order for town council regular monthly meeting Tuesday, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and I'll call for the adoption of the ninety-third meeting.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Compton-Hobbs.
I'll second it.
Seconded by deputy mayor Palmroy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And for those who are tuned in, councillor Dyson Edmonds is on our way in from a previous appointment and she'll be here very shortly. We have no delegations. I'll call for the adoptions of the previous minutes of the eighty-ninth minutes, June the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
It's been moved by councillor Cran, seconded by?
Councillor Baiki.
Councillor Baiki. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you, councillor Baiki. Call for the adoption of the previous minutes of the ninetieth minutes, June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Being moved by councillor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by?
Second.
Councillor Cran. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And councillor Dyson Edmonds has come in just entered the chamber. I'll call for the ninety, adoption of the ninety-first minutes, July the seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Been moved by councillor Cran, seconded by?
Councillor Baiki.
Sorry, it's been already seconded by deputy mayor Palmroy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll call for the adoption of the ninety-second minutes, July thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. Moved by councillor Dyson Edmonds, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Councillor Compton-Hobbs. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you councillor Baiki. Correspondence you have in front of you?
Yep. Just a question on correspondence, your worship. I'm just wondering, has any responses been given back? One in particular was on the visit of the HMCS Goose Bay coming in September, and there was a letter written to the mayor and wanting, hopefully they're going to be able to have somewhat of an open event that will allow people to come aboard the, board the ship. Hasn't been in here in a few years. They've also asked if we can reach out to the family of Doris Saunders who was involved when the ship was named. So I'm wondering if there's been any follow-up on that, or if there can be, please, to the town clerk.
And I did forward that to the staff as well, to my knowledge I did.
Oh, follow-up and advise councillor accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on then from the correspondence to the committees. And the first one is municipal affairs, councillor Cran.
Thank you, your worship. Municipal services committee meeting was held at four-thirty on July the sixth. Present were deputy mayor Bert Palmroy, councillor Michelle Baiki, engineer rally Randy Dillon, superintendent public works DJ Elliott, fire chief Brad Butler, superintendent water and sewer Keith Pike, and executive assistant Kathy Eddy. Regrets from chair Sean Cran, DFO Nadine McCauley. Meeting was called to order at four oh five P M. Review of previous minutes and action items. There were no errors or omissions. Managers' reports. Fire department manager's report was attached for committee to review. To date, there have been seventy-eight emergency calls. Fire apparatus is all fully serviceable with the exception of one gauge on pump number one that will be replaced next week. Fire protection ops are positioned closes on July thirteenth. Various funding received and waiting on twenty, twenty-one FES New Glen Labrador funding projects to be approved. Twenty-four new BAs arriving this week and sixteen aging BAs being donated to Landso Clear and Rid Day Fire Departments. Fire further one training ongoing with testing and certification for early fall. Regular training and break for summer months. No update on mutual aid to five wing agreement. Public works, manager's report was attached and reviewed. Crews are performing regular seasonal duty, sand removal and road maintenance, ongoing. Property repairs have been completed. Tipping fees is at one hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Rush cutting ongoing, scheduled to be complete this week. Spring cleanup, cleaning up this week. Draining and ditching upgrades have started. Under the water and sewer, manager's report was attached and reviewed. No major issues at the water, at the water treatment plant. Reservoir lift stations busy with water and sewer services. Water flushing and sewer cleaning ongoing. Water quality report now available online and results are rated excellent. Wayne Rumble currently working on building twenty, addressing issues with mold, structure, et cetera. Considering CAF arena for storage once options are determined and costs associated. Provided, what's that word? Decibel?
Decibel.
Decibel? Decibel reading from, from plant and looking for solution. High roof serviceman has arrived but still at Goose Bay Motors for the last couple of months waiting to be assembled. Engineering, the manager's report was attached and reviewed. YMCA opening Wednesday afternoon with exception of the pool that has some lighting issues. Kelland Drive extension ongoing. Tender for gateways has closed and over about one hundred thousand dollars. gazebo under construction. And that is my report, and I ask that it be accepted as presented, and I do have one recommendation.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Cran. Do I have a second for his report? Seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions? I have two for the town engineer. Could you just give us a rough update on the paving? And also perhaps you could give us some sort of timeframe when we would meet with the delegation that we met with who are coming with concerns from the, from the groundwater? So if you could just give us nothing on, on these two, please, mister engineer?
Yes, thank you mayor. The Kelland Drive portion of the project has been paved. The remaining work, the contractor has to come back and do the shouldering, and he also has to come back and do the line painting. Right now, currently today, he's working on Cabot, Cabot Crescent. Some other roads, I know Haven is done, Dalton is done, and Strathcona is done. And the other roads are, have been prepped for, for paving and the Class A has been installed. So hopefully within the next week, most of the paving should be completed within the town with the exception then of the shouldering and the cleanup that he has to come back and, and, and complete. As well, he's also doing two storm detention chambers up on Abbott and McDonald, and they will be completed shortly also. The meeting with the residents with the flooded basements, I've been, we've been assured by the hydrogeologist that that will happen this week. So I'm hoping to finalize the time with him probably for Thursday and Friday. I'm just waiting on his final report to come in for, he's going to do a presentation, virtual presentation to the affected residents. And so anyway, once I get that, that day finalized, I'll advise council and I'll advise the affected residents, residents accordingly.
Thank you. And also two on the new part of the street down on the Lower End Valley, which they haven't opened up yet. It's, it's pretty dark there and the hydro was supposed to install lights. And I know that you were in the process of talking to hydro, but tomorrow, if you don't mind, I will go and, and see the, the general manager and to stress to him that like we need lights put up on the street for safety reasons. Imagine with that new pavement, dark as it is and on a dark night, that it would be impossible to see anything. So we do need the streetlights. And that's the new section of the road from where we turn off of Kelland Drive and go over and meet it with Court Real.
Yes, that's correct, mayor. The, you know, we don't propose on opening that section of road, that Kelland Drive extension until, until at least we have the, the lines on. Because right now it's all black and dark and, and you really, it would be hard to discern between the actual road and shoulder and so on. And, and as, as you noted that, we do have a request into the hydro to have that, that have streetlights put up on, on that section also.
Just another question on that. What about the lights that are, went along the old section of Kelland Drive expansion there? Will they be moved closer to the road now? Or will they stay where they're too? Can we check into that as well? And, and the other thing is, when you come off of Kelland Drive extension onto Court Real, the, the hydro lines go directly over the road? And I'm not sure if there's an issue with the height? So that might be something else to check out as well.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I'll have those two had was checked into.
I was going to ask, when are the lines going down? Do you know, or?
JCL is in the process of, of arranging for that, for the, for the line painting. And I emphasized to them that we'd like that done as soon as possible. So the intention is to have that done. If they can't arrange for the, for some other, if they don't have the equipment or they don't have the time, there are local people here in town that they can contract with, that have the, that have the work done. But no, they, they did say that if they can't do it themselves, or if they can't arrange for one of their own subcontractors that you regularly deal with, that they will contract with a local, a local line painter here in town.
So our, our line painting equipment wouldn't be supposed for, the amount of work that needs to be done?
We could, we could contract if, you know, if, if the contractor wanted to, to employ our town equipment. But there's also the matter of the fact that we have our own work to do that we'd like to get done, you know? So we have our own priorities and, and you know, that's a significant piece of work when it comes to all, all the roads that they've paved so far this year. So it is part of their contract and, and presumably they'll have that done sooner rather than later.
They are, they're responsible for the, for the painting of the, of the lines, right? Not us?
That's correct, mayor.
Yeah. And I understand too, some mission that they may be looking at, if they don't have the time, they'll be looking at maybe Circo or one of the other local contractors.
That's correct also, mayor. They will be looking at local contractors.
Are there any further questions on the report by councillor Cran? There being done, all in favor of his report?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimous. We'll move next to councillor Compton-Hobbs, community.
I got a recommendation.
I'm sorry councillor Cran, I, I jumped ahead. You have a recommendation to bring forward?
Be it resolved that we, the ultimate recipient, the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay, accept cost share funding as outlined in the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure Project approval letter dated July the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Project seventeen, G I, twenty, or twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand series lift station upgrades with a total project value of one million one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. This council agrees to provide the ultimate recipient share value of three hundred and nine thousand four hundred and nine dollars in funding for this project and authorize the mayor and town clerk to enter into a funding agreement with the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure on behalf of the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay.
It's been moved by councillor Cran. Do I have a second there?
I'll second.
Seconded by, sorry, deputy, councillor Dyson Edmonds had her hand up. It's been seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on the recommendation? Put forward. It's pretty straightforward. It'll be a, a, a good, a good thing for our town. So therefore, that being moved and seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Councillor Baiki, did I hear you?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll next move on to councillor Compton-Hobbs, community services and recreation.
Okay, the community service and recreation committee met on July the fifth. Present was myself, councillor Michelle Baiki, program coordinator Anne Morris, executive assistant Kathy Eddy, DFO Nadine McCauley, director of community development and research Brenna Drummer. Regrets councillor Sean Cran and PR manager Waylon Williams, engineer Randy Dillon, campaign manager Michelle North over. I did get a verbal update from Michelle. They're still going strong with the campaign for donations for the wellness center. Actually, we got a check presentation tomorrow from one of the donors. So that's still moving forward. So that's, that's good to see. We talked about adult playground. We did budget some, we did budget for adult playground equipment in last year's budget for this year. So to town engineer and Brenna are in the process of ordering that equipment. It won't arrive until next spring, but we'll order it now so we can have it in time to put in place for next spring. Kinsman Park is open and going full swing. I see with all these hot days, there's lots of children out enjoying the splash bed and, and the park itself. So that's good to see. We talked about the Lori Luke playground. Our program coordinator and the engineer are going to go up and look at that area for a parking space. So we're working on that. I'm not sure if we've done it yet, but it is in the, in the making, on the list to get done. Summer recreation is in full swing, full complement and, and children on the waiting list. Going over well, and that'll be in operation till August the twentieth. Good to see that soccer and softball are still up and running after COVID and, and you know, our shutdown and everything. Things are starting to get back somewhat normal. So it's good to see. And I know minor softball is trying to get a, a session going for August. They're looking for volunteers. So anybody out there listening that wants to volunteer for minor softball to get the league running for the, you know, a few week, a few week, few camp, a two-week camp session, reach out. We're looking for volunteers. Talked about Healthy Waters Labrador, and I know that they had just had funding approved through a co-op for their, for their bathrooms and some upgrades down here. So that's great news. Hoping to finalize that MOU with the town and Healthy Waters before our term ends. So hopefully in the next month or so, we should be able to get that dealt with. And this season for the ice on the arena, we were looking at doing it earlier. So we're looking at September the seventh, ice possibly going on, which is going to be very beneficial to the user groups. Hopefully that'll happen for September the seventh. It's really early for us this year, and that's what the user groups wanted last year. So we reached out and hopefully that's going to happen early. And so that was it for our meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the seventh. I will meet with the program coordinator Anne Morris within the next couple of weeks to get an update of other things that might be happening in that department. So please accept my report as presented. I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions on her report?
I just got one. I received a, a request from a resident about registration for summer rec and wondering if they could pay per week. From a, it was a low-income family who was looking at putting their kids in the summer rec program but couldn't actually pay, I think it was two hundred and seventy dollars for the full program. So I was wondering if there was any allowances for to pay weekly or biweekly. Do you know, Jada?
Well, that's definitely a question that, um.
Jada.
Jada can answer. I think she's dealt with a couple more similar. But yeah, the person you're talking about can reach out to Jada.
Okay.
She'll be able to answer that.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Yes.
They are set up as camps, not a full summer program. So I think it's like a two-week camps at a time. So you can't register for them all at once anyway.
You can only register every two weeks, right?
For camps, yeah.
But if there's someone who, you know, a long and give family that needs some type of assistance, I'm sure Jada will work with that.
Yeah.
All right.
Are there any further questions on the report put forward by councillor Compton-Hobbs? Just to say that it's good to see people getting out and about more than last year. And I know, again, the splash pool seems to be a, a big thing and a godsend, I think, on some of the days we had. But really, it's good to see people in recreation, people walking, people using the Kinsman Park and so on. So it's, you know, it's a good start.
Sorry, mayor. I should have added too, that I'm looking at it here, that we had a soft opening of the wellness center on July the seventh, and I'm getting lots of positive feedback now. There's lots of people asking about the swimming pool. And we actually had a meeting this afternoon. I was going to ask Randy if he could speak a few minutes to what we're waiting on and how much longer it might be.
Yes, councillor. Reached out to the Pamela, the design builder, and they advised me this afternoon that the, that the lighting issue, that the brackets that were going to be shipped to hopefully correct that, that issue, should arrive any day now. So he's going to further reach out to a subcontractor to get a more, get a, get a confirmed date. But he, he's expecting that any day to get, to receive those brackets. So it shouldn't take too long once we, once they're on site to get those installed.
People are anxiously waiting for the swimming pool.
Yeah, oh, big time.
Yeah.
My granddaughter included. So anyway, are there any further questions? There being done, all in favor of the report?
Aye.
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 Thank you councillor Baiki. We'll move on to councillor Palmroy, economic, I'm sorry, development, planning and enforcement.
Issue, thank, thank you, mayor. The development and planning committee and enforcement committee met on July the eighth. Present were myself as chair, councillors Lori Dyson Edmonds and councillor Jackie Compton-Hobbs, engineer and co-manager Randy Dillon, municipal tech Brian Johnson, GIS tech Paul Zell, municipal enforcement officer Larry Baker, and executive assistant Kathy Eddy who took the minutes. Regrets from the director of financial operations and co-town manager Nadine McCauley. Meeting was called to order at four thirty-three P M. We reviewed previous minutes and action items. There were no errors or omissions. One of the action items discussed was in relation to crown land applications within the Nav Canada noise contours, particularly in the Quarry Road area. With the new development regulations in place, staff were asked to follow up with Nav Canada to, to determine whether or not the town could approve a referral for crown lands applications in that area. And since the meeting, staff has been engaged with Nav Canada. And there'll be a couple of recommendations coming forward shortly with respect to that. We also discussed the ongoing issue of dilapidated and derelict buildings and was advised the staff would continue to move forward on issues issuing cleanup and demolition orders to rid the town of these eyesores. With respect to enforcement, constable Baker advised that his focus is still on the current situation involving the vulnerable population. As council is aware, guard of security is still under contract to monitor various areas in town and to report any suspicious activity. Constable Baker also advised that he has been asked and has agreed to train two animal control officers in the First Nation Inu community of Chechechee. In all, the municipal enforcement officer responded to two hundred and thirty-seven calls during the month of June. A copy of the complaints report is attached to your council package, along with the RCMP report to the mayor. At the time of our meeting, the financial control summary and monthly payments report were not available. It wasn't a very heavy agenda, your worship, and the meeting ended at five fifteen P M. With that, I move that council accept my report as read, and I do have a couple of recommendations.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by councillor, deputy mayor Palmroy, seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions regarding his report? Only to say that, no doubt, our community constable is, is a very busy, busy person. And, you know, as much as people sometimes are criticized at, like a lot of our staff, you know, he is doing an excellent job. There being no further questions, all in favor of councillor Palmroy's report?
Aye.
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 Carry unanimous. And you do have some recommendations to bring forward there, councillor Palmroy?
Yes, your worship. First recommendation regarding a, it was a discretionary land use application from Michelle and Danny Sweringer, L U Designs. The development, planning and enforcement committee recommends council have no objection for discretionary application from L U Designs for the operation of a convenience store at Four Hamilton River Road with the following conditions. Compliance with all of the town's development regulations with particular reference to section five point two point one three, that the applicant obtain a written, written approvals from Service N L for fire, life and safety review and accessibility registration, that a fire, life and safety inspection as per NFPA one oh one be satisfactorily completed at the applicant's cost, and that the applicant provide an application for a change of use at the applicant's cost.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by deputy mayor Palmroy, seconded by councillor Dyson Edmonds. Are there any questions regarding the, excuse me, the, the motion put forward?
Just happy to see that this is here and being brought forward tonight, and they're going to be very pleased with this as well.
Are there any further questions on the recommendation brought forward? There being done, all in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you councillor Baiki.
The next recommendation, your worship, was what I mentioned in my report regarding application for crown land, particularly in the Quarry Road area. The development, planning and enforcement committee recommends council approve the application for Mr. Stephen Gregory for, for seasonal cottage. I guess, I just have to clarify with the town engineer. So it, it is a crown land application, but his intent is to build a seasonal cottage?
That's correct, councillor.
Okay, so we're, we're approving a crown land application here?
We're approving the, to my knowledge, that motion is supposed to be for the construction of the, of the dwelling, the seasonal cottage. I think it could be a copy and paste matter there that the?
So there's a potential mistake in that? Can we, can we go back to that? Can you just double check on that before we put forward a motion that may not be accurate?
Yes, councillor. I'll have someone check on that.
Can you mark that one, your worship, that later?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't it be the same recommendation that was brought before?
Yeah, it was, it was a crown land application, I do believe, councillor?
Yeah, which is the same thing. Well, it's a seasonal cottage with the, the application, right?
That would be the intended use. Yeah. But that's a separate application.
Yeah, I think the individual owns that particular piece of land. He purchased that piece of land.
Okay.
It's granted, yeah.
So this is for the construction of the, this is the, the construction.
So it's a land use.
It's, it's, yes.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you.
So therefore, to be clear, that we need to note that if we approve the share, we're approving it. So therefore, to be clear, that we need to note that if we approve the share, uh, we're approving it, uh, uh, with, uh, the knowledge that, uh, the Crown Land, with, uh, he already owns it.
Uh, that's correct, Mayor. He owns it.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. So it's a discretionary land use application.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's discretionary. I don't have the motion in front of me because I, actually, I didn't draft it.
I think it's clear now.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of there, your, uh, I'm sorry.
Need to complete the motion, Your Worship. Uh, the Development, Planning and Enforcement Committee recommends council approve the application of Mr. Stephen Gregory for a seasonal cottage with the following conditions: compliance with all of the town's development regulations and compliance with other provincial or federal authorities as required.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmeroy, seconded by Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Uh, I think if there was any concerns regarding this application, it's been answered. So therefore, all in favor of the, uh, recommendations put forward?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Baiki. And for those who are listening in, if you're wondering why I am saying thank you, Counselor Baiki, that, uh, she's, uh, uh, on a call in, and, uh, anyone who is not present, we need to acknowledge them, uh, uh, with their vote. So, uh, carry on, dear Deputy Mayor Palmeroy.
Thank you, Mayor. The Development, Planning and Enforcement Committee recommends council approve an application of Ms. Tammy Lamborn for seasonal cottage and agricultural development, again, in the Quarry Road area, with the following conditions: that, that it be compliant with all of the town's development regulations, as well as compliant with other provincial or federal authorities as required.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Palmeroy, seconded by Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Are there any questions on the app, on the, uh, motion put forward?
Again, uh, I'm just, uh, I'm sure they're just as pleased as we are to bring this forward and, and get it dealt with. It's been a, a while with these applications.
This has been going on for many, many years, and
Yeah.
we were kinda hung up with our old development regulations. And with our new ones, I think there was a way for us to move forward on dealing with this with NavCanada and others. So it's, uh, it's good, 'cause it's good for those residents, too. They've been waiting a long time.
Okay, are, there being no further questions on the recommendation put forward, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Counselor Baiki. That's it for your recommendations, dear.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, Counselor Dyson Edmonds and Economic Development and Public Engagement.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Economic Development and Public Engagement Committee met on Tuesday, July the sixth, uh, roughly twelve noon. Present was myself as Chair, Counselor Compton-Hobbs, D F O Nadine McCauley, Director of Community Development Research Brenna Jarar, Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy, and Engineer Randy Dillon, uh, regrets from Councilor Sean Cran, um, and regrets from, uh, P R S C Manager Wayla Williams, who is away on holidays. Uh, the meeting was called to order at twelve ten. There were no errors or omissions in the mi, in the minutes. Due to the fact that, uh, Mr. Williams was away, we didn't get an actual manager's report from him, although he did have quite a, quite an update in the package. The, uh, Brenna's report, um, was given to the committee. Uh, she provided updates on several files she was currently working on. She advised that the Mitek's Bus Study had received, up until that point, two hundred and fifty responses, and she had planned to meet virtually with, um, with the students involved in that project on the seventh of July. She also indicated that the next round of funding for the Rapid Housing Initiative, um, that we are trying to access had been announced, and she was attending a webinar that day to, uh, get an update on that. Um, committee also asked that she meet with, uh, M H A Trumper for an update on the Central Labrador Capic Association as how it relates to obtaining, um, Crown Land in Gosling Park. Uh, Brenna also advised that a tentative date to tour the gathering place was Thursday. Of course, we know that that was pushed ahead, uh, but we did, we did do that tour, and it was quite amazing, actually. The manager also provided information and updates with respect to various funding applications and announcements. An information note regarding Memorial University Community Hub's pilot progress program was attached for the committee to review for consideration. Uh, we did discuss, um, lots of calls, and still many calls regarding Birch Island. There's been a few close calls, actually, just this past week when, when search and rescue was called, um, for swimmers at that area, but I'll get into that a little later. Um, but there being, uh, no further business, the meeting was adjourned at twelve forty-seven, with the next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, Wednesday, September the eighth, at twelve noon. And I ask that my report be accepted as read.
It's been moved by, uh, Counselor Dyson Edmonds, seconded by
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Cran. Uh, are there any questions on the, uh, report put forward?
Uh, just gonna say, uh, when we were at the Economic Development meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, we discussed the swimmers at Birch Island, and, uh, we asked the executive assistant, in the absence of the public, uh, relations manager, if she could post the signs that were posted on, uh, Birch Island. And she did that, and it was shared many times on social media. Uh, so, um, you know, the signs are up, they're, they're there. People are still taking risk and going out there and, and, and swimming. So, uh, you know, the town has certainly put out the P R to advise people not, you know, that it's, uh, they're at their own risk, and it's, it's not safe to do so, and are continuing to do it. And, and just on the, on the, the Rapid Housing application, the deadline this time around is August thirty-first, and, uh, really hoping, uh, we're really advocating, and Brenna's doing quite a bit of work on that file, to, uh, hopefully be successful this time around. Will make a huge difference to this community. So hopefully, uh, we'll, uh, we'll succeed, uh, in the coming months on that application. And, uh, also, yeah, the gathering place was, uh, was a great opportunity, and it was good to tour it, and there was lots of, uh, positive out there that, that certainly, a model that we can certainly use in the Happy Valley Goose Bay. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll get everybody on board to, uh, build some kinda Labrador Gathering Place model, uh, similar to what we toured. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, say too, uh, huge thanks to, uh, Minister Dempster and the Premier for sitting down, meeting with us, uh, last week, and, um, with some positive, uh, meetings, and, uh, looking forward to working with them in the, in the very near future. And, uh, I do believe that there's some trips planned up here in this area. So hopefully, we'll get to meet with them again real soon, and, uh, keep this housing and homelessness and transient, uh, concerns in the forefront, so we can continue to work together and try to find a solution.
Are there any further comments or questions on the report put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Counselor Baiki. We come to the, uh, report of the last committee, and, uh, where Counselor Baiki is, uh, calling in. I do believe she has asked, uh, Deputy Mayor Palmeroy to, uh, read her report.
Uh, yes, Your Worship. Uh, I'll give the overview of, of her report, and she will read, uh, the motions that, uh, come with it, if that's okay, Counselor Baiki?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, um, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the Finance Administration and Policy Committee met on July the twelfth, um, and was called to order at four fourteen P M. Those in the tenant, uh, in attendance was the Chair, uh, Counselor Baiki, myself, um, Counselor Palmeroy, Deputy Mayor Palmeroy, Counselor Lori Dyson Edmonds, D F O Nadine McCauley, Executive Assistant Kathy Eddy. Committee reviewed the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes, and there were no errors or omissions. Committee suggesting putting out public service announcements and place signs up for banning specific types of toys on municipal properties, and basically put forward a policy with respect to that. That would also, uh, deal with unruly behavior or activities indicating that will not be tolerated on municipal properties, and will, could result and may result in, uh, removal from, uh, municipal property. Uh, D F O Nadine McCauley stated that applications are still being received for the twenty twenty-one low-income relief. Um, to date, we've received forty-four applications for a one-hundred percent, uh, tax relief, thirty-nine applications, uh, for seventy-five percent, twenty-nine applications for fifty percent, and nineteen applications for twenty-five percent. The D F O gave her department an, um, an overtime report and stated, uh, that we are on budget. There are no further, there was no further business, and the meeting adjourned at five oh two P M. Next meeting is scheduled for September the thirteenth at four forty-five P M. Uh, ask that council to accept this report for record-keeping of the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay. Public meeting dated July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Deputy Ma, Mayor Palmeroy, and there is three or four, so I will ask the question, do I have a second, or?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Compton-Hobbs. Uh, are there any questions on the report put forward? There being none, all in favor of the report?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Counselor Baiki. And you have some recommendations?
So I will be reading the, um, the recommendations. Can I go ahead?
Yeah.
The, um, F A P Committee recommends that council prove a one-time grant to Nuhah, Nunahhatake, Inuit Community Corporation Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars towards their community garden program, which supports Inuit elders and persons with disabilities.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, uh, Counselor Baiki, seconded by Counselor, uh, Counselor Cran. Are there any questions on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Counselor Baiki.
The second item is mail-in voting. The F A P Committee recommends that as per section fifty-four of the Municipal Elections Act, council rescind the motion to vote by mail, specifically Items Nine, G and H of the eighty-ninth meeting of Council Health on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
It's been moved by Counselor Baiki. Do I have a second, or?
A second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Palmeroy. Are there any questions, uh, on the recommendation put forward? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Counselor Baiki. And, uh, the next one, uh,
It's the approval of checks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Your Worship. Would like to submit for approval of checks in the amount of one million, six hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
It's been moved by, uh, Deputy Mayor Palmeroy, seconded by
I'll second that.
Uh, Counselor Cran. Are there any questions on the check run? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Counselor Baiki. And we come down to the final, uh, item on the agenda, Counselor Squorum, and this time I start to my right, which would be Counselor Baiki. You're on.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, so I want to say, with an interesting tour at the, um, uh, gathering place in St. John's, very informative, and it could be well, you know, we, it would be perfect for our community to have something similar. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor Herman for reading my report. And also, I encourage everyone to take advantage of the Birch Island walkway and the, um, activities that, that, to, to, to rock the town. And, um, that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and one more thing. I want to thank, uh, Minister Lisa Dempster and Minister Howell, the Municipal Affairs Minister, and also the Premier Fury and, uh, for meeting with us on the, um, concerns that we have with the town.
Thank you, Counselor Baiki. Uh, Counselor Compton-Hobbs?
Uh, yeah, uh, as, as I already said, it was, uh, uh, in, you know, it was, uh, very, uh, informative and positive to do a tour of the gathering place, and, uh, certainly a model we could look at using here. Uh, hopefully, we'll all work together and see that happen. And again, thanks to Minister Dempster, Minister Howell, Minister Abbott, and, uh, the Premier for meeting with us and listening to our concerns. Uh, looking forward to working with them in the future. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, we only got two months of the, of our term on this twelfth council left, and, uh, still seems like so much that we'd like to finish, like the RV park, you know, we talked about it a long time, and we're, uh, we're doing a little bit of work behind the scenes to try to get an RV park become a reality in, uh, in Happy Valley Goose Bay. So hopefully, we will see some positive move, movement on that as well. And I was out in a boat on Sunday, and I noticed there was quite a few boats. So hats off to the Labrador Hunting and Fishing Association for the work they're doing on a new marina. It's definitely needed here. Um, there was a lot of boats. I would estimate probably, uh, sixty to eighty boats out there, uh, at that dock part on, on Sunday, the trail is right, and, uh, a little bit congested at times. Definitely, we need a marina, and, uh, hats off to the association for trying to move that forward. And they're doing, they've already started phase one, so, uh, hopefully, it won't be too long before you'll be able to tie a boat up at their marina. And, uh, I just wanted to say condolences to the Voisey and Saunders family. Uh, I didn't know Gracie, but, uh, she certainly made an impact on a lot of people. So, uh, thinking of that family for sure. Um, and there's, you know, there's, uh, some sadness in our community, uh, today, too. Uh, certainly thinking of, uh, the families today that are, that are hurting out there today. Um, and that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Compton-Hobbs, Counselor Dyson Edmonds.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I've had, uh, a few concerns, especially, uh, with the, um, power outage yesterday. So I've had several people reach out with regards to the backup generator. Um, and of course, I have, I have no answers for them. I know this was an issue that, uh, former Mayor Hickey was very passionate about having the backup generator up and running. So I'm not sure what happened there with the latest power outage, but, um, I did say I would get back with, uh, an update from Hydro, and I will. Um, with regards to the, uh, trip we took, um, to do the tour of the gathering place and to meet with some of the government officials, the gathering place was definitely a huge eye-opener for me. Um, I did expect it to be, uh, a great facility, but I was totally blown away by how well the program is ran there and just the facility in general. So it was great to, uh, to get to see that, and I'm certainly looking forward, as is the rest of council, in, um, some type of a smaller-scale model to, to help us in this community. It's definitely overdue. Uh, a lot of work went into the Rapid Housing Initiative, as Counselor Compton-Hobbs had mentioned with, uh, Brenna as well, and it was good to have her on board to explain to some of the ministers that we met with, um, just the magnitude of this problem. And, you know, I, it was great to meet with the ministers, but I, I, I do sincerely believe that some of them just don't get how big this issue is. But I look forward to them actually coming into the community. I know, uh, Jackie and our community constable had the minister out in the trails, uh, to see firsthand, and I look forward to seeing a few more ministers and the premier taking that route as well, to see exactly what it is and how big the need is. Um, other than that, uh, it's, it is great to finally see some movement on something that we've been pushing quite a while with the, the, uh, the situation on Trans-Labrador Highway, especially with regards to Steve Gregory. He's been waiting a long time, so it's great to have that. Other than that, um, my condolences certainly to, um, the Russell family in, in the loss of, of Madal. Madal was a huge, uh, volunteer in the community, spent a, a lifetime dedicated to the Royal Canadian Legion and a bunch of different organizations. And as well, hats off, um, to the work that, that they do in the community. Um, condolences as well to the family of my dear friend Millie Turpstra, who lost her battle as well. A very sad, uh, reality, um, to, to realize that a, a wife that was so dedicated to, to doing things in the community and, and it's lost. We also had, uh, lost another eighteen-year-old in, in Hope Dale, uh, to a drowning. So uh, condolences to the community of Hope Dale as well. But, uh, that's it for me right now.
Thank you, Counselor Dyson Edmonds, and Counselor Cran.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to say. Just, uh, just to rea, rea, reiterate my former counselors I just said, uh, my condolences as well, not to, but like to the whole of Labrador. It's been, uh, the last three to four weeks has been, uh, actually devastating. Uh, I just got back from two weeks vacation, so I rejuvenated and ready to go.
I just got back from three weeks vacation, so I rejuvenated and ready to go, and I guess now's as good a time as any, that I will announce now that I will be seeking reelection in the upcoming election, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilor Cran, Deputy Mayor Palmer.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, my condolences as well to families who have lost loved ones in recent times, and today, the loss of Ms. Turpstra and Ms. Russell is a big loss to our community as well. Just a story for, last summer, I had a call from a family member from Mabel Russell, asking when the town was going to install a street name after her father, after her maiden name, being Tippet. And the street name, the street was designated to run behind the Wellness Center. And I made a quick call just to ask the question to the town engineer and to the superintendent of public works at the time, and within no time, they had a street sign put up, and she was so proud to have to go down, and she was ill at the time, and to have her picture taken underneath the stop sign that simply said Tippet. So hopefully, we can have the right, correct name put up there soon rather than later. Also, the roadwork, lots of positive comments around town. Some people are a little bit inconvenienced, but they're looking forward to seeing it being done, and a lot of people are saying this is perhaps probably the most construction work that's happened in our community in many, many, many years. And I don't recall in my thirty-plus years here seeing as much roadwork being done in one summer. I want to say hats off to the Safe Alliance. They had a great week last week, Pride Week, it kicked off with a proclamation signing here in front of the town office, and carried out throughout the week with various events. And from all indications, they were very successful, ending off with a very well-attended Pride March on Saturday, that ended at Kinsman Park for a Pride, Pride in the Park Day. And with that, I want to thank the community constable and the fire chief for helping to lead and escort the parade. There must have been well over a hundred people in attendance, and people joined them as well at the, at Kinsman Park, as well as our animal control officer helped with traffic control as well, and all staff, of course, that helped during the day. Respect to Kinsman Park, and I mentioned the community constable, the community constable is planning to have a concert in the park on August the twenty-first, and I'm told it's going to be quite the show, and we're really looking forward to it. All proceeds that will be raised during that event will be provided and given to the housing hub, and so I encourage people to keep that on your calendar and hopefully have an opportunity to go down and see a great show. Just one other thing, your worship, on Saturday, the thirty-first, I believe the mayor is celebrating his seventieth birthday, so I want to wish you an early happy birthday, young feller. And I guess while I'm at it, it would be twenty-eight years to the day that my wife said I do. And so with that, I'll leave it at that, your worship, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Palmer, for the early birthday greeting. I did receive calls on the latest outage of Hydro, and I was informed that it was a lightning strike. And with regard to, I guess we're supposed to have two lines now coming hooked up to the, across the river, and please God that we'll never, ever have to use the backup generator again. First, when I moved to Goose Bay, we moved in on Deefenbaker Street, and Yellow and Millie Turpstra were some of the first neighbors that we got to know, and she was a wonderful woman. So to her family, her brothers and sisters, and to her husband, you know, and her children, certainly my condolences. To Mabel Russell, in nineteen seventy, when I was in the fish camp, her father, Bill Tibbet, was the cook. And ever since then, myself and Mabel and her late husband Gerald and her family, we've had a strong friendship, and she was a pillar of strength in our community. And I guess if, there's a saying goes that, you know, you put up a hell of a fight, well, Mabel did exactly that, and she outlasted her illness she had a lot longer than anyone had ever predicted. Pride in the Park, I took a stroll through it on Saturday, it was nice to see. A lot of work with our paving, and it's good to see that the recreation, Councilor Compton-Hobbs, that the ballparks are being utilized, you gotta know, by the men and women playing softball and some other sports. It's good to see the splash pad over there, and Kinsman Park opened, and, you know, it's good news for our community. In about sixty-two days from now, we will have a new council. I invite anyone who is interested in their community to consider putting their name forward to run for council. With that being said, I will not be a candidate in the election in September, and with that, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilor Compton-Hobbs, seconded by Councilor Cran. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, Michelle, thank you.